Half a day and good morning. The Committee on Health, Land, Justice, and Culture is now called to order. Today is October 4th, 2022. The time is about 10:05 a.m. In compliance with the open government law, notices for this public hearing were published in the Guam Daily Post on Tuesday, September 7, and again on Friday, September 30, 2022. This hearing is livestreamed via the Guam Legislature's YouTube channel. Notices were also disseminated via email to all senators and all main media broadcasting outlets. Individuals testifying shall first be recognized by the chair before speaking and begin by stating their name for record-keeping purposes. We have one agenda item this morning, that is Bill Number 335-36COR, sponsored by myself, Therese M. Terlahi. It's an act to amend section 84-101, 84-103, 84-104, 84-105, 84-107, 84-110, 84-112, and 84-122, to add a new section 84-124, and to further repeal and reenact section 84-102. All of these are in Chapter 84, Title 10, Guam Code Annotated, Relative to Updating Emergency Medical Services Provisions in Guam Law, Establishing Initial Licenseur Fees and Eligibility, Training, and Skill Requirements for Emergency Medical Service Personnel. I'd like to acknowledge the presence of my colleagues, beginning with our minority leader, Senator Chris Duñez. Thank you, Senator. And Senator Joanne Brown. Thank you, colleagues, for being here this morning. So before we hear from those who signed up to testify on the bill, and I thank you for being here this morning, just want to, as sponsor, I would just give a brief introduction of the bill. So established in the 14th Guam Legislature, the emergency medical services was declared by Ilhaes Latoura to be, quote, "a matter of vital concern affecting the public health, safety, and welfare of the people of Guam. The importance of establishing emergency medical services ensures that the people of Guam receive accurate and timely responses to medical emergencies. With the intent to expand emergency medical services, the EMS Commission was created to ensure that all matters relating to the operations and systems of emergency medical services were handled in a timely manner," and this is provided in Chapter 84 of Title 10, Guam Code Annotated. This legislation updates Chapter 84 provisions with the assistance of the EMS Commission and will bolster the already established EMS system here on island. It will ensure that we are able to provide these services expeditiously to the people of Guam while updating or enabling statutes that establish such services. The bill modernizes the provisions that establishes emergency medical services, including updating definitions, establishing initial licensure fees, eligibility, training, and skills requirements for emergency medical service personnel, and it allows for the certification and our recognition of the certification of paramedics on Guam, which will, we're hoping, greatly expand the service to the people of Guam. I want to give credit to the EMS Commission, so I'm going to name them now. The Emergency Medical Services Commission consists of Kevin Sinikolas, who is the chairperson of the commission, and he is from the Guam Fire Department; Chief Head Nurse Julietta Keneni, who is the vice chairperson, who is from the Guam Department of Education; Cherica Chargulov, the treasurer of the commission, who is from EMD, supervisor at Guam Fire Department, 911; Assistant Fire Chief Darian Berrier, voting member, Guam Fire Department; ER Head Nurse Mark Guaco, voting member, Guam Memorial Hospital Authority; Margaret Bell, secretary, CDR coordinator, from the Department of Public Health and Social Services; Arthur Polino, voting member, Guam Police Department; Dr. Robert Leon Guerrero, voting member, pediatric director, Department of Public Health and Social Services; Dr. Frankie Mandiola, voting member, EMS medical director at Guam Memorial Hospital Authority ER and Guam Fire Department; Dorothy Duñez, voting member, nursing and allied health administrator from the Guam Community College; Dr. Jolene Uggan, public member; Dr. Elliot Ross, voting EMS assistant medical director at GMHA ER and GFD. We've also invited, in addition to commission members, we've invited the HBLO Office, we've invited the Guam Memorial Hospital Authority, and we've invited the Department of Administration in case this affects any personnel issues there. So we will now accept testimony from those on the panel. We're going to begin, I think we'll begin, who do you think we should begin with? Chief Berrier, should it be you? Please state your name for the record and proceed.
Assistant Chief Darren Berrier, Guam Fire Department. Good morning, Speaker, Madam Chair, Senator Duñez, and Senator Brown. Thank you for this opportunity. I'd like to speak on behalf and in support of Bill Number 335-36. I have been serving the island of Guam for 34 years as an emergency medical provider, as an emergency medical technician, and an advanced emergency medical technician. Have witnessed many changes in how the profession was adapted to meet the needs and expectations of public when they are at their most vulnerable. We have progressed from having certified technicians validated at a local level to validation of licensure through national testing with the National Registry of EMTs. All in the name of improving the level of care in the prehospital environment with the ever-changing EMS field, it is difficult for local laws to keep up with requirements, terminology provided by the Department of Transportation. Bill 335-36 effectively addresses these issues and provides verbiage to allow for additional changes as determined by the Department of Transportation. Where once we could only dream of having a paramedic-level providers on Guam, serving the people, we now will have a pathway for paramedics to be licensed to practice. This is important since we are seeing our first paramedic professionals ready to be licensed and practice their life-saving skills on our advanced life support unit. The Office of EMS has always met challenges of being undermanned, underfunded. They have strived with dedication and perseverance to support and provide for the needs of each EMS professional. The implementation of licensure fees will help tremendously to improve their ability to provide the best support they can. Bill 335, I believe, is the right bill at the right time to progress EMS in Guam. With the licensed paramedics in the field, we will be able to provide a higher standard of care that will have direct impact on patient survivability. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll now hear from GCC.
Half a day, Honorable Speaker Terlahi, and honorable senators of the 36th Guam Legislature. My name is Dorothy Lou M. Duñez. I am a registered nurse and the nursing and allied health administrator at Guam Community College. I oversee the nursing and allied health programs, which includes all EMS courses offered at the college. I am here today to provide testimony in support of Bill 335-36 relative to updating emergency medical services for Guam. As our island continues to move forward with the aim to improve health care in our community, it is vital that we move forward with the updates for our emergency medical services. We should not allow our standards to stay behind while we push to enhance medical services for our island. The National Highway Safety Administration and National Office of EMS emphasizes EMS is much more than a ride to the hospital. It is a system of coordinated response and emergency medical care involving multiple people and agencies. EMS is an intricate system, and each component of this system has an essential role to perform as part of a coordinated and seamless system of emergency medical care. The total value of this intricate system was most recently experienced by all of us on a whole new level during the COVID-19 pandemic. We are grateful to have not experienced a collapse of our EMS system due to the lack of resources and manpower already felt prior to the pandemic. Thanks to the leadership of our government and every member of the EMS system, we were able to pull our resources together and develop comprehensive plans and strategies in order to maintain the safety of our community during the most vulnerable time. This is a clear example of the EMS system in action and the critical impact it continues to make for our island. The Guam Community College plays a key role in the enhancement of the EMS system as the leader in career and technical workforce development, providing the highest quality, student-centered education and job training for Micronesia. We currently offer the Emergency Medical Technician Course and have provided advanced EMT courses and refresher courses through our continuing education and workforce development office. We have also partnered with the School of EMS based out of Tyler, Texas, to educate and complete 15 of our GFD personnel to become paramedics for our island. It is our objective to ensure the training standards for our programs meet the national education standards for EMS, the Department of Transportation, and the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration. It is our goal to ensure each student is competent and qualified for entry-level position as an EMT, emergency medical responder, or paramedic. Additionally, we make every effort to ensure they will be prepared for the National Registry Certification Exam and thus are able to qualify for local licensure. The college conducts annual assessments of their programs and curriculum in order to maintain current practice and knowledge in the field. Updates to this bill will help sustain the standards for EMS education as well as maintain the rigor of our programs. This can be seen with the most recent 100% completion, 100% local licensing, and passing of the National Registry for EMTs from our 22nd fire cycle graduates. This is a pivotal time for us, with 15 of Guam Fire Department's personnel officially completing the paramedic program. Three of the 15 recently becoming nationally-registered paramedics, and with the passage of this bill, they will be able to be locally licensed paramedics. Furthermore, our local private hospital, Guam Regional Medical City, was awarded the Joint Commission's Gold Seal of Approval for Advanced Primary Stroke Center certification. When it comes to stroke care, time is brain, and every moment matters. In order for this certification to be truly successful, our EMS services must be in line with the current protocols for stroke assessment and care. Let's make this time matter for our emergency medical services and move forward with the updates for this legislation. I am in full support of this bill for the future of our students, our EMS workforce, and the health and safety of our island. Thank you.
Thank you. Can we get a copy of that, please, for the panel senators? Is that possible? Thank you. We'll now hear from Cherica? Do you want to give testimony? No? Okay. Dr. Frankie Mandiola.
Morning, Speaker Terlahi, and Senator Duñez and Brown. Half a day. My name is Dr. Frankie Mandiola. I am a GMH Emergencies Medicine Physician and EMS Medical Director. The Guam Memorial Hospital Division of Emergency Medical--
Sorry, I'm sorry, Dr. Mandiola. Can you just clarify? So you are the EMS Medical Director?
Yes, myself and Dr. Ross as well. There's two of us.
Okay. And so Dr. Ross is online on Zoom. Welcome, Dr. Ross. Hi. Thank you for joining us this morning. Okay, so you are two co-directors of the EMS--
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Just wanted to clarify that.
Sure.
Thank you.
The Guam Memorial Hospital Division of Emergency Medical Services is pleased to support Bill 335-36 that will update Chapter 84, Title 10. The revision will serve to update emergency medical services provisions in Guam law. This update includes critical changes needed to improve the quality of prehospital care delivered to the island community. The updates represent the hard work and collaboration of the Guam EMS Commission over a two-year period and have the support of multiple community and government agencies, including the Guam Fire Department, Public Health, Department of Education, GMH, GRMC, and the U.S. Naval Hospital. Although Guam is a relatively small island, many community members still live upwards of 30 minutes from their closest hospital. These prolonged transport times can lead to long periods without critically-needed medical interventions. Guam suffers from over 250 out-of-hospital cardiac arrests annually. There is an evident need for advanced care providers to respond in the prehospital environment. The National Registry Certified Paramedics is the highest national prehospital certification for the medical first responders. These highly-trained first responders offer the best chance for those with medical emergencies outside of the hospital. Until last month, Guam did not have any paramedic-certified first responders for the community outside those working for the military installations. Thanks to the hard work of the Guam Fire Department, Guam Community College, in collaboration with the School of EMS, Guam now has graduates of a homegrown paramedic certification course, a course that, moving forward, will be able to graduate additional paramedics to support the island community. Guam law currently does not recognize paramedic-level certification or have a process to license these individuals. The updated Chapter 84, all the provisions for training requirements, certification, and licensure of paramedic providers, this is required to allow providers to practice in the community at their new, higher level of training and care. The Guam Memorial Hospital Division of EMS, in collaboration of the Joint Regional Mariana's EMS Medical Director, has developed a unified standard of care for the island where all members in our community, both living on and off-base, will receive the same standard of prehospital care. This one-island approach to prehospital care is only possible if Guam law is updated to allow paramedics to practice in the community. Thank you for the opportunity to provide some context to this critically-important bill, and we are happy to answer any questions that arise.
You very much, doctor. Mr. Kendra, did you also want to testify on behalf of GMH? Okay. But I very much appreciate. So, doctor, maybe for those watching, if you could just explain your role as the EMS
So, as EMS Director, we help oversee training and actually when paramedics or medics per se administer drugs, they're actually administering under the license of the medical director as well. And so we also sit on the EMS Commission, help improve, you know, any issues that arise, like diversion policy, protocols. So that's what the role of our office does. Yep.
Great. I want to thank you and the doctor for your work, of course, during the pandemic, and, you know, and I know those were very challenging times, as has been testified this morning. But they pulled through. They were able to find ways to continue to get what had to be done, done. So I'm very excited about this bill. I was just sharing with my colleagues, I think it's great to increase the level of care in our community, and thanks to all your hard work. I want to commend all of you. I know you had to work together, GCC, GF, Guam Fire Department, the 911, the EMS at GMH, I mean, all of you, and that this was a priority. And so I'm excited that we can now certify paramedics, and that you have certified, well, nationally-certified paramedics now. We have 15 of them, and that we are able to license them on Guam. And if they're licensed, then they can actually practice at that level, which is a higher level. And can you, maybe, doctor, while you're here, if you don't mind, just share with us, you mentioned about cardiac arrests, and then I think Ms. Duñez talked about stroke. And maybe if you could just explain what does that have to do with a paramedic and their training?
Can you clarify that question?
I'm just, you talked about, you know, there are 250 cardiac arrests per year outside of the hospital--
Yes.
And then Ms. Duñez talked about, you know, we're also talking about stroke. We have incidences of stroke here in Guam, and so I just wanted you to tie together for all of us--
Sure, sure.
--the importance of a paramedic in that type of care.
So when a stroke occurs, it's pretty much cutting off the blood flow to the brain, and time is brain. So the quickest response to get to the interventions is vital. So you have three to four hours to actually get critically-needed medication after the stroke occurs. So GRMC actually has, now is our stroke center, and actually can do intra-arterial removal of that blockage too. So paramedics that recognize the stroke and getting into the proper facility in a timely fashion is very vital for, it was one part of our paramedic training, yes, yeah.
So it's that training to recognize what's actually going on with the symptoms that they are facing? Okay. Appreciate that. And maybe Chief Berrier, if you could just explain, we're talking about Guam's, what is Guam's standard for paramedics going to be? Is it going to be equal to the national standards? I know that these guys did meet that, but the 15 that you have right now, but what is our standard with this bill going to be going forward for paramedics' license on Guam?
Well, with the cooperation and, you know, direction of our medical directors, Dr. Mandiola and Dr. Ross, they have developed a very comprehensive protocol in order for us to go into that next phase. You know, currently, we have the advanced life support units, but they're staffed by advanced EMTs that have been given extra skills in order to perform at a higher level. But with the paramedic now, they're able to incorporate more skills and then meet future demands. So it does, it does mean, it's a big game changer for the people of Guam. We'll be able to have more, it's more of a ER-to-the-door concept now. We're going to have, we're going to have paramedics arrive with all the medications that they're going to need. They're going to be able to start IVs, perform advanced cardiac life support measures in the field prior to arrival, which means that we have a better chance of response of spontaneous circulation in patient to where they can survive outside the hospital, you know, survive and be able to get discharged and still be breathing. It's, it's just an amazing thing that we're going to go into, and the people of Guam are going to benefit tremendously.
Great. I'm very excited about that. I love that phrase, "ER-to-the-door." I mean, yeah, fantastic. Can you explain the connection between the Guam Fire Department and the Guam Community College's paramedic program?
Yes.
And how, what can we expect as far as, are we going to have more?
Well, the whole thing, concept was that, you know, we wanted to move forward to paramedic, and the idea is, in order for us to get there, we needed an accredited institute, educational institute, that can provide us the training. That allows us to be able then to test with a national standardized testing format, which is the National Registry of Paramedic. So having that partnership with GCC to be able to provide that education is paramount. And it's not an easy process, and that's why they partnered with the School of EMS in order to get us that level, because until we have paramedics practicing on Guam, we had to send them off-island to do their internship and skills assessment. But once we have our paramedics practicing on Guam and GCC is up and running with their educational format, our paramedics become adjunct teachers. So any paramedic course that is going through GCC, whether it's GFD-based, civilian, or federal-based students, we will be able to provide the field paramedics that will be able to give them the field training that they vitally need without having to go off-island.
That's great. And do we have current Guam Fire Department personnel that are interested in, others that are interested in doing this? Do you think this will be an attractive field for them?
Well, as far as the field training of student paramedics, that is basically, becomes part of our dedication to supporting Guam Community College in doing a paramedic program. Our program becomes a training ground for them, and then we will, and we already do that with their EMT courses, where when it's time for the ride-alongs and to have that field experience before they graduate, they come and ride with the Guam Fire Department medic units. And so it'll be the same way with the paramedics, but it'll be a little bit more hands-on to where they'll give instructional training to do procedures. The EMTs don't do that. Students don't do that part.
All right. Does becoming a paramedic in your program require, Ms. Duñez, require being an EMT first and an advanced EMT as well?
Yes. It would require that first they become EMTs. As the educational institution, what we will do is we will compare other programs, paramedic programs, and model that format. And a lot of the programs in the states do require that they are EMTs first and either nationally-registered or licensed before going into the program and attempting to be a paramedic.
Thank you. All right. So the other thing about this bill is the, so the bill establishes fees. So those who want to be licensed are going to have to pay a fee. This is similar to all other licenses of health professionals. We require fees, and then we use those fees to administer the exam sometimes and to monitor. Of course, these commissions are entrusted to monitor these professionals as well, make sure that they're up to the standards. The fees, according to BBMR that we put in our bill, are not enough to meet the cost of an office of EMS. But maybe if anyone would like to talk to that. So let me just give a breakdown. So they said that the fees that we've mandated in our bill, this is just a start, and then the EMS Commission is supposed to do their own fee schedule. If they need to increase it, they can increase it, right? If they need to add on additional fees, they can do all of that through the administrative adjudication process, right? Just like every other board, you can establish fees. So $22,000 in revenues, what's estimated to be brought in, this is Public Health, I guess, helped BBMR calculate this. They are calculating $285,000 would be necessary for the EMS office administration, $285,000. I don't have a breakdown of what that would entail, but I would like you to think about this, and if you could, you know, send any additional testimony that might impact this. And then they said there would be a $241,000 operational cost for this EMS office as well. So a total of $526,000 cost to run this EMS office. But, doctor, you mentioned an EMS office already. Maybe if you could explain, yeah, what is the difference or--
Well, there's two. There's EMS, division of EMS is at GMH, but then there's also the Public Health Office of EMS that's going to help license and make sure all the certifications are done for our paramedics. So there's two. So what clarification would you need again, Speaker?
I don't know. Is any of you, are, is any of you familiar with this, why this cost would be so great? But before we get to there, I'm just going to put that question on hold. We'll dive deeper into that. But Senator Duñez, I'd like to give him the floor right now.
Mrs. Spassim, Madam Chair, and I just wanted to thank the panel. I know that this has been a long time in endeavor, and truly, I know that many of our candidates, Madam Speaker, really have been, have been ready for this. It's just a matter of this final piece coming into play, and I know that, I did share with the speaker, because there is a chart on the back here that indicates basically the capital outlay. But I'm sure that this is just an amazing investment in terms of what Chief Berrier has brought to the attention and all of the panel, that the significant advanced level of care for our, you know, for our people, that they're going to be receiving in the field is just a clear step above, and in terms of life-saving. So I just wanted to say thank you for all of the members who put this together. We look forward in the process of following this through as it gets stood up, and I think that through additional hearings, Madam Speaker, particularly even during the budget cycle and others, we're going to find out really the efficacy of this. But I want to thank the Speaker for the bill, because I know that certainly the investment here-- here is certainly well worth it. And also, just on the other end, on the GMH end, and, and, you know, the service delivery and Doc, I know Dr. Ross on line two would concur that it just, the life-saving capability and really kind of giving the patient a much better chance, outcomes, I think, are really going to be affected here as well in terms of how the patient presents at GMH, and then, you know, the follow-through and, and, you know, God willing, the eventual release of the individual. But one of the things that I know that GMH and, of course, every hospital deals with is, is really the condition of the patient when they arrive in terms of, it's going to, it's going to dictate, you know, outcomes. And so I just think that this investment, it pays for itself really in terms of the favorable outcomes that can happen when you're able to do this type of treatment in the field prior to arrival at any emergent situation. So thank you for that opportunity, Madam Chair, to share, and I look forward to, as the bill hits the floor, if there's any other things we need to do to enhance its capability. But once again, congratulations. This is a true testament of collaboration when we look from the, you know, the guys in the field, the educators, the end-users, really at GMH. I just don't think that, we can't highlight this success, you know, more in terms of a community collaboration, particularly between our agencies. So thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senator Duñez. I like the way you put that, that the end product is actually worth any amount of money, really. Yeah, I agree. So this is great. Increasing quality of care to the people of Guam will find a way, right? Okay, so, thank you. I want to acknowledge that there's also a letter here from the chief, Daniel Stone, he came in to deliver it and said he had a conflict, could not stay, but his testimony is in favor of the bill, and I want to thank him for that. It talks about the, that this will strengthen the capabilities to bring the best care to the people of Guam, and that, sorry, Chief Stone is of the Guam Fire Department, I'm not sure if I mentioned that, but, and of course, he said that the amendments also require the recognized national standardized testing levels for EMS professionals and defines the scope of practice for each. Establishing the level of paramedic as an EMS professional to be licensed in Guam enables the Guam Fire Department to continue its goal of modernizing our advanced life support units with licensed paramedics. Acknowledging the national standards for all emergency healthcare providers, from basic responder to paramedic, will greatly enhance the services provided to the community by both public and private entities. With the implementation of licensure fees for both emergent and non-emergent EMS professionals, the Office of EMS will be able to strengthen their position as the regulatory agency and have the capability to fund special training programs that will enhance licensed EMS knowledge. Respectfully, Daniel C. Stone. Thanks to all of you. Is there anything else you would like to add on to our discussion this morning? Otherwise, I'm going to discuss this fee issues with the Department of Public Health. Most of, most of these are like, you know, HPL Administrator, Program Coordinator, they're saying they need two of those, they need an administrative assistant, a data control clerk, just to license the emergency medical personnel. They're saying they would need, Public Health is saying that it would need operational costs such as off-island training, board expenses, website maintenance, copier lease, attorney fees, rent, office and training supplies, and computers. That's where they came up with this projection. So I will discuss this with Public Health, since they're not here today. Again, congratulations, I love the work that you have done together, and I'm glad that we have 15 individuals who have gone and done this, kind of taken that risk that they, you know, we would all come through and get that licensing authorized for Guam. And, and thank you so much, Doctor, and Dr. Mandiola and Dr. Ross, right? Dr. Ross for being here this morning and for all your work, and for helping us to stay on course and save lives. Anything else? All right, Situs Masih, this hearing is adjourned, it is 10:40. Situs Masih, thank you.